There being a quorum, I would call the meeting to order. I just want to mention, there is one phone call that I just absolutely have to step out. If it comes in, then we'll continue the meeting forward. I apologize.
We understand. It's real life.
Some of it still worked earlier. Not many. I don't have any special note, no flags in the room?
I'd like to report, I'd like to report the meeting.
Has this been recorded? So my whole thing, Frederick Taylor has been on the date?
Oh, I always got the first.
Okay.
That way she can send, she can send just that piece to the bank.
What's your agenda say?
Truncated.
I did. Oh, you did. Okay.
So the, the meeting, yeah.
Nothing new.
At the end, sometimes I do, I pay to do the.
You signed your attendance sheet? Just going through my list there. We know, we know, we know.
I have a proxy sign for me.
There you go. And that's it.
You've done it.
Kelly, you gonna start us going on our agenda right away?
Sure. Let's go to, are we ready to dive into the warrant or? Oh, great. We, do we have an extra agenda for?
Public comment. No, I don't have one. That's why I'm pretending I know what I'm doing. All right, before we do that, Mr. Spencer, did you want to say something?
About? Masco. Oh, Masco. Oh, I, I have resigned my position at, on the Mascanovit Regional School Committee.
Effective May?
Effective May 9. The intention was to allow time for people to decide to run as an election, which I felt was the fair thing to do for the town. But to make it effective as of the beginning of that day, so that then an election result is announced at 8:00 PM. It will have been vacant for 20 hours and then there'll be somebody to fill it. Assuming there is, there are candidates who run, but it's, there's questions whether there'll be one or two seats. Mine would be for one year for the remainder of my term. And Bill Hodges, if he decides not to run, there will be a three-year term ultimate.
Well, thank you, John, for all your time and efforts working on the school committee.
Now I've got more to give here.
That's good for us.
What year terms?
Fifteen, sixteen. Yeah, I came in part, I was, I was appointed.
Oh, okay.
Midway through somebody else's term and they resigned in the middle. And so I think I've done five and a half or five plus.
Congratulations. Thank you. So you did not tell the town clerk this, though? This went to the school. So that's why I think we have this motion to make?
What I did do was I told the school on Monday night about 10:30, 10 o'clock PM. I came home, I sent the letters directly to all of you, including Debbie. And indicated in my cover letter that it perhaps should be forwarded to.
I had that, I had that one, I think.
Is a newer one that went on in Board Docs?
I think, I think, well, I think the way we're gonna do this motion, though, right? I think it's better than, because officially, you have to file it into the clerk. So I think another way to do it is what we're gonna do here, all right?
Well, I had, I had a question about whether or not that position would be filled by ballot or by appointment?
It's filled by appointment if it's until the next election. You can either call a special election right off the bat, or you can appoint, as I was, appointed until the next regular election. So I was appointed in December and I, or even November, I guess it was. And then I went up for the remainder, one-year remainder of the term, May to May.
Well, the whole thing has been answered, though, because you're serving until election.
Yeah, I, I wanted to both open it for other people, but not put a situation where it might get political.
See, if you, if you resigned as of now, then we would have to have a special election or an appointment.
Or you, or you don't have to do anything. You could, you could have said, just let it.
It's so close, we don't really do nothing.
Probably do nothing.
Because it's so close. Unless, unless it's important to say, no, we need somebody to vote on the budget.
If there was self-temperature.
The main reason, to be honest, that I decided to make it effective May 9 is because I'm leading the teachers' negotiation team and that whole process. And we're at a very delicate stage. I have a particular relationship with the union leadership and the feeling I had and Kevin Lyons supported it is that I should, you know, to be, to stay and part of it for as long as I can would be good.
I think procedurally, you have to submit it to the town clerk. What we intend to do here is to do a motion, right?
Motion to what?
Oh, I thought we were doing a motion before listening to town clerk.
This reservation.
I'm gonna start breaking talk with the town clerk. I think that, that it's incumbent on.
Who you?
I know my letter did get short.
Oh, I talked to her about it the other day. I don't think she knows, I don't think she knows how to handle it.
Debbie, I have asked you.
She knows about it.
She should.
If she knows, if I were to ask.
You were sworn in by the Pops Hill Town Clerk, right?
I don't think it has anything to do with the state. I agree with you. Go check for it.
Yeah, yeah.
But Kath is aware. She has that.
She's aware.
And she should have gotten a copy of that.
She talked to me a couple days ago about this.
She knew, yeah. So she got notice and plenty of time, whether I needed to hand it to her or it was indirectly done. I didn't. Honestly, think about that, is the difference there, other than saying that I knew she'd have to be notified?
I'm confused, but, but you mean, the, are you trying to have the slot on the ballot?
Yeah. Trying to declare my upcoming vacancy enough in advance that people can apply, can file nomination papers.
But you said it was effective the day of the election, right?
Right, which means there will be, imagine, for instance, I was going to the end of my term and I said, I'm not taking out papers. Then people will be taking out nomination papers while I'm still serving, but as soon as the new person is elected, I'm gone. My intention was, my announcing was to allow the clerk, because I'm not going to stay on there. Give official notice that I am leaving the post and therefore it can go on this year's ballot. That was the intention.
Right, but, but which then there's not, there's, I'm lost on the role of this election. I'm not trying to be silly.
I don't think there's any.
Oh, oh.
I don't think there's any wrong. I never did.
The next item on the agenda says vote to refer Mascanovit Regional School Committee membership.
Ninth of May. That's election day. The 1st of this day.
The seventh is election day.
His resignation, did you go?
No, this is, uh, town media. This is election day.
The town clerk is satisfied that she has all the information she needs, probably the word or whatever, to understand that he should be on the, that position should be on the ballot.
She's accept, I'm not trying to go over, she's accepted that as notice of her resignation?
Yes. She has everything she wants.
You're, you're effectively, the state statute says that we need to just refer this to the town clerk so that she can add this vacancy onto the election warrant. Simple as that. It's an acknowledgement and just a formality.
Yeah, if I resigned, didn't do this until, let's just say, June 30th, then it would go to the, I would inform everybody, it would go to the board. The board could choose to appoint someone to fill in until the next election. Be it a special election, which they could choose to call for this purpose or for any other purpose, or the regular election in May. They could choose to, but don't have to, fill that date. And at which point, then it would be open. But the intention in doing this, because practically from the negotiation point of view, I really kind of wanted to stay on longer, see whether I could help resolve that to the very end. This may put some positive pressure on that happening. But I also felt that it was important that it be seen as an open opportunity for people to get on, rather than.
I don't have all the technical things in front of me, John, but I think when it becomes a long period like that, it's a little different. There, we either act, if we don't act, somebody can come in within 60 days or, if we don't act within a certain period of time. I'm sorry, this, all I'm saying is I believe there's a little bit more complexity when it's a long period of time.
Maybe so.
I'll check it and we'll discuss it.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna matter. Middleton left an, left a seat on the school committee open for five months.
And then no citizen came up or whatever else and said, I just want to know, let us know that there's more complexity. If you did it now, it would be not because it's so close to the time, but it was a longer time, it's a complexity.
Hope I did it right.
You did it right. But I just, if you did June and it was multiple months, nine months or something, it is a different situation.
That might be a different thing, but hopefully we avoid that entirely by having some candidates. And I think we will, we'll talk with a couple people.
So Kelly, you're saying this is just a technicality, even though the clerk has everything she needs and we need to make this motion?
If there's something, then we should do it. Thank you, Kelly. I was not aware of, well, you put it in there, but I didn't, okay.
We looked that up just to be clear.
So I, I make a motion that we forward the letter that we received from John Spencer relative to his resigning from the Mascanovit School Committee effective May 9, 2019.
It's not quite the language that's in the one labeled official vacancy notice to town clerk. Are you reading that same one? Did that get changed?
No, I was, oh, you had two different ones?
Yeah, no, I was reading the one that's in Board Docs.
Yeah, I think what I said was, was, I, I just, I didn't read any.
It's for a term of one year is, I think, the big key.
No, I think the important thing is that we're forwarding it to the town clerk. It's up to the town clerk to, to, Kelly, is it?
Alfred cues myself.
Kelly, is this the language that you felt was necessary to meet the requirement?
This is what I got from her.
I will, I will, oops, 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 I'm sorry.
It's under official vacancy notice.
I withdraw my, if somebody else has it in front of them, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, vote to refer the Mascanovit Regional School Committee resignation from John Spencer to the Pops Hill Town Clerk and add the open seat to the 2019 election warrant for a term of one year.
I second that. Thank you.
Can you further discussion? All was in favor.
Five.
So I die. Can you reach each thing? Thank you all. Kelly, you wanna start our discussion, please, on the?
Sure, I, I think maybe perhaps the easiest thing might be to go through what changes I have made since I gave everyone a copy. We sent, we sent everyone a copy yesterday, or we put it in both four docs. Yesterday's version was version 1.2. Since the time that I forwarded that to all of you, I've been doing some internal work. I had two reiterations with, with town council. Is there a question?
Why is this version 1.1?
That's, oh, because that is Dick's, that, those are Dick's revisions. Those aren't mine, but.
Oh, I see. This is not the, it's the online copy that we go with.
That's right. That's what we're going with right now.
So Dick sent us his version.
Gotcha. Took me a second to realize that. I didn't.
So there are a lot of those changes that were in his version that I just incorporated in my.
With our G comments, that should be, that's fine. I'm okay. I'm with it.
So, can we maybe talk about process for an instant? It would seem to me, it's just, it adds burden to people that where they have to, they have to go through all of the detail. If, when you do it, you, you send it out with just the changes. People can look at the changes and sometimes it makes a difference. Who made them? And you can merge them into, if you make them separately. I have no problem with people getting copies of somebody else's law, but it seems to me it's much better when you just merge them in and don't confuse people with, I, I did make a change up at the top that said, or something like that. It's just a procedure that we use. Can we avoid, can we avoid having to send out the extra copies? Could they just get merged in?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, at this point, we've got a document that is, that has a lot of moving parts. And after today, I don't think that everything after today should be in alignment. I don't understand.
Okay, it wouldn't happen again then? Okay, we'll just put it out.
Also, this is 1.1, this is 1.3 here that we have. This is 1.1. So the one we have in front of us. And that's the problem with doing a merge, if it's already, other merges are going on with new ideas. There's two separate things that are coming together, and if there's ever a conflict between two things that are trying to be changed at the same time, which one prevails, that's why.
And they don't have to prevail.
Yeah.
You can accept both of them or reject both of them. Accepting both of them then would, you know, this one said was, this one says were.
But then we have to discuss it.
That said are. See, you have all of them there. You can have them all there and you can have who did it. I, I'm not encouraging that.
Okay.
I'm not. I, I would say to merge them where there's no conflict, just merge them and, and leave the fact that, but what we want to do is see the change in version 1.3 versus the one that we read the most, which was 1.1 or 1.2. I don't know.
Yeah, I would agree. Going forward, anything that's a change, maybe if we can make another color and that way we know what has changed. But comments from any of us, I would suggest we send them over to Donna and Kelly and they could make copies for us to look at. So before they're merged in, because say I made a change and I actually gave them a recommendation for a change.
Yes.
But I didn't want to put it in here because we all haven't discussed it. You may disagree with it, in which case they just have to go back and unchange it. So if we have substantive changes, I would say if we could give them to Donna and Kelly and then discuss them at this meeting. If it's a small typo, you know, in instead of is or whatever, that's fine. But for clarity, as Mark asked me to kind of help with this, for clarity, put all of our substantial changes, bring to the meeting, discuss them. And if they are agreed to, they would incorporate them and give them to us in the next draft so that we don't have multiple versions or multiple changes potentially if we don't agree with what each other has suggested for the warrant.
You suggested another color. Kind of suggest, essentially does that, but gives even more information and relieves us of having to put a color in, take a color out. And that is to simply enter, have Kelly or Debbie, whoever is making the change, enter it as a change that they're making to the document. And then we get the document that is, shows the changes.
Like the cross-out, any additions, so you can see that you have changed.
It shows you what they crossed out, what they added, the date and who did it, Debbie, Kelly, whatever. And when we say accept, nobody goes in and changes anything else, you just push the button that says accept or reject if you say, no, I don't want that change. We all agree we don't want that change.
Yeah, that would work. I agree.
But technically, it works very clean, very easy, and it's very easy for us because when the document comes into us, we simply go up and review and say, next, next. And instead of trying to read through the whole thing and, you know, figure it out, you just go next and it'll take you change, 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 change.
Because the bottom line is it just shows you what the changes are. What I would recommend is they not incorporate any changes from us until we all have discussed it.
Until we all see them.
That's right.
And then when we say, yeah, that's a good one, accept. Yeah, accept.
Well, I'm suggesting that she not incorporate it into the document until we've talked about it because she's so busy to incorporate something, only to potentially have us say, no, we don't like that. She can just bring and say, here are Dick's changes, here are Boyd's, here are Lynn's. We'll go through them. If we agree, she'll incorporate them. Because they're making changes continuously from KP and from the FinCon to incorporate ours before we discuss them. And it can be confusing.
Could be in there. And so, so we can see them. Oh, this was done on this date.
It gets, yeah.
It's very easy to do.
Well, it's easy to do, it may be difficult to read is my concern. The function will.
Then all you do, if you want to read it, all you do is say, show, show no, all you do is say, show no markup and then everything is quote accepted. And you can switch back and forth.
There are five or six different sets of changes from different people. I've done big document changes like this. And you get everything there. It gets difficult. I, let's just, I guess my feeling is, I like having them sort of a summary of the changes proposed. You've gone through some smaller things here that are worth us, as we go through this, perhaps addressing each one, doing it article by article, because I know you have made a couple of catches that are really good.
Okay, let me, can I just tell you what I've done so far? So I've, I've been careful to number them because frankly, I personally hate dealing with version control review mode on Microsoft. So regardless of what you do with the Word document after I give it to you, is really your business. But for my own sanity, I need to be able to make sure that I can capture all of the moving parts and present it to you in a format that I can explain and that is not going to make me, I don't want to just pull my hair out of my head. So let me.
You did a great job so far with 1.1, 1.2, and now the 1.3.
Excellent, excellent.
So this is, this is my, this is the plan. The plan is that you will not see 1.3 after tonight, after today.
Appropriate, because there will be changes.
We're gonna make some changes now.
You'll turn them into a 1.4.
2.0 on is what you're going to get tomorrow, so we can discuss it on Monday.
Good, good. Every board meeting goes to a new number.
So this is called our preliminary draft because it's had numerous revisions, because we're building it. So it started with my scratch notes, my napkin notes, my papers here and papers there, and I put it all together and I gave it to you at the last meeting. I said, here's a, here's a shell. And so since then, what we've been doing is refining it, adding in articles. I talked with the department heads. I'm putting in their articles. Greg Kron gave me his water articles and I'm going through them. So I've done that. We've talked with KP Law, both for the document, they've gone through it twice, but also in individual articles. So a good example is the revolving fund. We realized that the revolving fund, refunds, does not have to be in here because we're not proposing any changes to the ones that were here last year. So you'll notice that Article number 10 looks totally different because now it's actually Article 28. Article 28 establishes one new revolving fund for the public hall. So basically, I've had to move up one of the later articles. I put it into Article 10 because that's what people might remember, is being revolving funds. So next year, if we have no changes, you will not see anything under Article 10 for revolving funds because the intent of the new legislation is that you vote on it once and unless you're adding or subtracting or changing, you don't have to print it every single year. Okay? So that's one difference between the version I sent you last week or that you got yesterday, between then and now. I'm just gonna walk through and I'm gonna tell you some of the key changes that were made between the time that I sent it to you yesterday and what I've been doing since yesterday to today.
So what's the best way for us to do it? Do you think, just follow down?
Look, just follow on what's in front of you on draft 1.3.
Now, before that, though, in our agenda, it has a number of individual items.
Yes, we'll cover that.
We're gonna skip over that.
You can call them as they come up.
The order's gonna be different. Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
So as we go through each one, Kelly, you'll tell us what's different?
Yes. I mean, generally speaking. So, so first of all, Article 4 is pretty common. It's in every warrant. Article 2, balance transfers, technically, they don't need to have this article. The reason I kept this last year was because of the fact that if we take out Article 2, our traditional Article 3 becomes Article 2. And I didn't know if towns could handle that much change in one year.
It's a lot of change. That's a whole number difference. That's a whole.
Right, exactly. So.
I'm still not able to wrap my head around it.
Well, and, but then even Lawrence said, oh, if you change this, then if you, if you get rid of Article 2, this is how you can change Article 3. And I was like, been there, done that, let's just keep it the same. Okay? So, but if there's any burning desire of this board to reduce the number of warrant articles, that would be the one that we could take out and then people will just have to get used to saying Article 2 is the omnibus budget, which is the general fund budget, including the elementary school budget and all of the things that go along with that.
So let me ask a question of Steve. Steve, my recollection is that this is not one we get discussion on.
This is not one.
Article 2 is not one we get a lot of discussion on. Therefore, leaving it in is not opening up the door for a long delay.
As I understand, Kelly, you're saying this article is redundant because the money has already been transferred in the budget.
Well, this transfers the money, but you can transfer the money with it in Article 3.
Yeah.
You don't need a separate article. I only did it for.
My opinion would be eliminated because the monies, and the fewer the budgets, the less opportunity for discussions.
Okay, that's good. Good point. Glad you asked.
So, so through the chair, the, the issue is that Article 2 really isn't legally necessary. We can easily word number 2 in number 3. The reason I kept it last year was because people are used to calling the general fund budget Article 3. And I didn't want to rock your world by changing it.
You had good reason last year, but I think it's still good reason this year. As much as it may add some kind of a complexity, it.
People recognize Article 3.
For the last 40 years that I've gone to town meeting, is the omnibus budget, I think. Let's find something else to put in 2.
Could we, Article 2, just sort of say.
We're spending too much time on something.
You know, just sort of say, something that says nothing included in Article 3. And so there's this placeholder there for people who care about the numbers.
That's basically what this is.
But this has a motion. I'm trying to say something that does not have to have any action taken. It just says, this is a placeholder because what was here is now in 3 and you just go right past it. So you get your numbering because there.
It may remove sometimes the questions that you get in 3 when you've got a lot of these transfers within 3. 3 becomes a very, much cleaner one as far as how you appropriate it. And to meet said appropriation.
I'm, I'm not gonna fight this battle.
Is this the only, these are the only four, uh, three funds that are being moved from 19 into 20, transferred?
They're, they're for next year. They're, they're basically funds that are going to offset the general budget.
Right, coming from this year, they're being moved.
No, no. See, it's all fiscal 20.
But they're coming from, they're not coming from this year's budget.
That's different.
The, the conservation fund is not, I mean, that's an existing revolving fund, for example. So it's not quote coming from this year's, from the 19's budget. So in answer to the question, yeah, it's not necessarily quote from the, from the budget. And, and the, the excludable balance.
I, I've seen a bill, in, in Bill Mont, we did a separate article where you basically transferred money from one place and you accepted that and people acknowledged that you are taking money from those funds before it gets applied and appropriated under Article 3 in the general budget.
I'm fine leaving it just for simplicity, if everyone's used to seeing it.
It's not really a big deal from my perspective. It doesn't, inconsequential, basically, legally.
Doesn't really matter to me, but for simplicity sake, just.
Okay. So the, so the other, the other thing that I've done, just so that you're aware, is I've gone through with, actually, both Debbie and I have done this. We've gone through to try to make sure that all of the phrases that everybody knows, to see if the town will vote to, to, and, or take any other action relative there to. We've gone through and we've tried to make sure those are all consistent. We checked for tense. This article approves, this article approves. So little things like that, we wanted to clean up before we move forward. On the, I don't, wait, the version I just see on my Board Docs right now is 1.2. Is that correct?
1.3.
Oh, I looked at the wrong one. Okay.
It's two of those areas up there.
Okay, that's right, because I wasn't sure if, so on the new one, so 1.3 Water Department Operating Budget, I put in all the numbers. So for Masco, the fifth, I updated.
Can we go back for a second there, Article 3?
Sure.
I may, I'm missing something here.
Yeah.
I'm looking on version 1.3.
Yeah.
And the italicized explanation on Article 3.
Yeah.
The transfers voted under Articles will go by 64,226. Right up above it says 59,226.
It's 59,000. That's something I didn't catch.
Okay, so that, that will get changed?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't want to look at that.
So that's one reason I highlighted it, so that doesn't happen, but I was in a rush, so I, this updated it up, but.
I just want to be sure we didn't go by it without.
Nope, yeah. Okay. So Water Department Budget's been updated with all of the numbers. That's pretty straightforward. I checked that with the town, with the, um, accountant. So the Masco assessment is, has changed and I just got that today. So this is going to change, the numbers will change again. It will go down. So the first time you, I sent this to you, it's about $71,500 more. I adjusted it and now we're gonna go back and adjust it again based on the latest information I got from Sue Gibbons. I'm not sure the difference.
The main thing is the, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but the health insurance was budgeted for a 6% increase. Maya's giving us a 0% increase and it works out to be, I think, $270,000 split among three towns.
Say that again?
About $270,000 split among three towns.
The $71,000 less.
We like to hear those numbers.
Yeah, it's 171,000. Keep in mind Middleton and Boxer have much higher assessments.
The bigger, the bigger percent.
We have, we have a smaller percent, but that's, that's the reason it went down. And we didn't cap that information until literally Monday night.
So that represented at least $71,000 in savings from the assessment. So, but what I'm saying too is that since that reduction, there's also been another email sent to me. So I need to check to see what the difference is and the numbers are. So that will change one more time, but that's why we highlight all the numbers so that they're easy for us to find and update when necessary. I did send the language for both of these articles to Sue. She said, she said, just for them to review them. In my email, I'll probably have any suggested changes that she might have. So I will be reviewing that and I will be updating this if it looks as if it's consistent. So this will have one more reiteration. I just want to make sure that our form and their form is. I just wanna make sure that our form and their form is, um, you know, that it's consistent. But I did intentionally put a note, because I'm not quite sure when these are finalized. I know that Wednesday's their budget hearing, on March 13th. So typically after the hearings, when I feel like we can put in the proper numbers as voted, and then we can maybe get rid of some of these notes.
The hearing was last night.
That was the budget hearing?
The public hearing, which is required by law, was last night.
Okay.
We have deliberation on Monday night, and if necessary, on Wednesday. Wednesday is the drop dead, must approve a budget date. So you will have something. Knowing Sue, you'll have it Thursday morning, you'll have the final, final numbers because the school committee has to approve it.
So my hope is that when I get those numbers, that's when I get to just take off some of this green notation where it says, you know, preliminary, it's subject to change.
A week from today, you'll have finals on these for sure.
Okay, great. So the next one, Essex, so I updated those numbers, and that was effective on February 12th. So before we go to print, usually I'll, I'll make one more, at least one more check into the Essex just to see if there's been any updates. Sometimes I'll, I'll also check just to see when their next budget hearing is, and if there will be time so that we can update the warrant before it goes to print. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Uh, if it doesn't, we'll leave on that note that it's, you know, subject to change based on, based on the final votes of the schools. Um, the other one, so 8th?
Quick question for you. We've got Dick's version of 1.1 here.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, there.
So I've already incorporated whatever was on this. Yes. For the most, for the most, I think maybe ninety percent of them I just incorporated.
I think I had a question, and not that it's a big deal, but it's maybe what we're talking about. Uh, under Masco, Omits, Capital, whatever, Stabilization Fund, it's referred to as Stabilization Fund Assessment.
I changed it to say Request.
You changed it to Assessment?
No, I saved, I changed it from Assessment to Request.
That's what I showed.
Oh, I see, in the, in the, um...
The first paragraph.
That's it. That's how it says.
Oh, oh, I see.
So I changed it in the first one, then I didn't change the second one.
Oh, I see.
I've seen it, I've seen it, no, you were right. I, I changed the first one, but I didn't go down in the motion.
It appears twice.
A number of times I did not do that. I only, I only noted it in one place, assuming that it would have been checked. I apologize.
No, that's, that's fine.
There's an Assessment also appears twice there. It appears three times there.
I'm going, so what I'll be doing is I'll be updating that, and I'm gonna be looking at Sue Gibbons' information, and just cross-checking everything so that we can scrub this appropriately.
So, in quick scan, Assessment appears four times.
Yeah.
Three times with the word stabilization fund in front of it.
I see it.
One time on the town's share of the assessment of same.
And that, one of those assessments is, is good.
The last one, town's share of the assessment of same, is okay.
Yeah, I think that one's fine, yeah, but the other three should be Request?
Yep.
So I have, share, oh, okay.
Let me show you. There's one right here, Stabilization Fund Request.
Yeah, we changed that.
There's one.
Now, but, so Town Council said that that was appropriate. Oh, wait a minute, no, that's right. Because the request is based on the state, the assessment of the town's share, oh, okay, I'll just...
So we're voting on the request, in which case will be assessed?
Okay. So twenty-six point five percent of whatever is what, I'll, I, I've got that one, I will clean it up.
You'll get it out, next time we'll see it.
Okay.
It's next.
Kelly, just, that Assessment there and Assessment down here too.
Yes, I got that one. So can I ask you?
Because this is...
Do we approve their assessment of Masco Regional School District of 450? Is that our role to approve that?
We approve the total and our portion of it.
We do both?
Right. And the reason for that is because the portion we pay is subject to the same thing as the budget thing too. So it kinda tells you what the total budget is, just as it does in Article 5.
That's what it has to say in this article, so that it's clear how that will be parsed out. It could be parsed out differently. Somebody could say, oh, th- those items that are gonna, stabilization's gonna be used where most of it is to help, uh, Buxford do something else. You know, it's not the case at all, ever, but it, so it's important that it does say, based on the, on the standard assessment.
It would be based on the standard. But are we approving that standard assessment? That's our role?
That's not something this town approves.
It's absolutely true.
But I'm saying, this is asking us to approve.
I, I went through this last year. It's, it's appropriate either way, but it's not necessary. It's only here because of tradition.
We're putting in what the total is that the district is asking for. The 119, 250 is a percentage, represents a percentage that is established by the rules the state has.
Right, that's why, and saying, we're not really approving the assessment, that's not our role.
Now, it's the previous year's October enrollment.
Appropriating and assessing to pay our share.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, the 450 is there just to set the stage that this is what our assessment is based on.
What our share of what is.
Okay, right. Good question.
What were you talking about?
I had that last year and I beat it to death. Um, the next one's pretty standard. Grant authorization, um, 9th standard, is for a chapter 90 money. 10th, so 10th, so Article 10. So last year, this had, uh, a bunch of language in there, approving revolving funds and limits. This year, we could have, so I originally had that because I thought that we had to produce that every year. I wasn't sure, so I put it in. But since speaking with Town Council, she said you don't need to do that. Um, however, since we are creating a new public hall revolving fund, I basically moved up the public hall revolving fund from the bottom of the line, and just stuck it in here. Reason why is just because maybe people think that Article 10 is revolving funds. So I was just trying to be consistent, and I didn't wanna throw off all the numbering on the rest of the document, so just moved it up.
Just ask you on the description for that revolving fund. It says the fees charged are deposited to pay for contractor fees, yes. Part-time wages, who's the part-time wages?
That is, there's no, none right now, but the thing is, is if we ever had a part-time person, do we wanna go back to town meeting to change it? So I left that in.
And then, expenses and programming, what is the programming?
It's really just a generic term, so that if we needed to say, if we're having a program for, an opera singer's gonna come, and we need to rent a speaker or a microphone, and they're paying us for it, I would consider that programming.
It's also true that if we wanted to have a public meeting, and for whatever reason we thought that we wouldn't need more capacity, we could do it in the public hall. We could take expenses such as janitorial expenses out of the revolving fund.
Right.
Okay. Not for anyone who's, who's renting, or, or departments, our departments will cover themselves.
That's where some of the revenue would come from, for this count, would be people that would be paying for the use of the halls.
That's where all of it comes from.
It's all coming from there. Yeah.
So programming is just... When I think of council on aging, a lot of the things that they're doing, it's not coming from this fund.
I, I think I just...
That is coming from their own budget.
Right.
But if they have a big deal there, they, they get to use it for free, right? Council on Aging uses it free, right?
Yeah, uh, yes.
So if we need to hire a janitor to come in and clean it afterwards, that could come out of this.
That, yes, that always comes out of this, the cleaning. But the programming, if they're doing anything to hold that event in that public hall, that comes out of theirs, 'cause they have all kinds of programs that they do hold in there.
Yeah.
That would be done out of here, just to declare.
So this is more inclusive than, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's worth of just to declare that. Uh, John, you're suggesting that if the town uses it for a function, meaning COA, or we have a meeting up there, or something like that, the cleaning of that, we're gonna charge to this revolving fund?
No.
No, okay, that's it, I thought you said that, never mind.
I said could, I didn't say would. But I, I'm, I'm not assuming that it necessarily happened, but that's how ours is.
It's not the intent, that's not the intent in any way, as far as I understand it, but...
Okay.
That, that, that becomes part of the discretion of the people who sign off, the responsible party that deals with the revolving fund, how they sign off that, that expenditure. Okay.
But to John's point, Kelly, um, he did set up the fee structure such that the internal departments don't pay, and yet the, there is cleaning covered in that. So the people who are coming from out of town are paying a larger fee to use the hall to create the pool that allows the departments internally, who don't pay anything, to clean, so that it's self-contained. It's cost just for that hall after events held in the hall.
If, if...
That gets, it gets messy for this reason. Let's say that we, it's not, this is not worth a discussion here. No. Uh, but I do have a question. Uh, on the titles of the table, it says Department Receipt. Um, is that the right thing to be saying there?
Yes. It's already in the bylaw. It was, it was established last year. So we're just taking the same form that we had last year and repeating it.
Same form used for...
Last year's public revolving funds.
Okay.
Everything's very consistent with what we already have.
Our language in establishing a revolving fund.
Yeah.
This is consistent language, even though it doesn't make any sense, in definitional sense.
Recommendation, so how you should word it.
So have we created now a public hall department in the town, in the budget or something?
It's just, it's just wording that isn't, no, no department. It's just wording consistent with legal precedent.
For setting up a revolving fund.
Yeah. So the next one's a pretty standard. I don't know if you wanna skip, well, three of those. They're, they're pretty standard, the same ones we've been looking at for senior care, well, in Martin Field, Family Services, Senior Care. So then we go down to Town Facilities Repair Maintenance Fund. Again, this is similar to what we've had in the past. Um, the amount we requested, and I put it in green because it hasn't been voted yet by the FinCom, is thirty-seven, represents twenty-five thousand for the general, um, fund, twelve thousand for plumbing improvements at police station.
Kelly, quick question?
Yes.
Above that, it says consent agenda group two.
Oh, where was group one?
That was the first.
The one just above.
That was one, asterisk number, or just single asterisks.
Um...
Which...
Oh, okay, somewhere traditional, is there, this verbiage, does it appear anywhere, or, um...
What should...
To indicate what is...
That's the responsibility of the moderator, so we'll take care of that when the consent comes up. You have to have approval of consent from the people that are there. And that consent starts with Article 11, oh, excuse me.
Article 11.
So 8. The question...
I would just say, put it in or don't put it in?
The question, put the same note, saying group one in between 7 and 8.
Just so it's consistent. Either don't put them in, or put them in.
That was my intent. Usually we don't put them in, though. I mean, I was just doing it for organization's sake, so we could totally define it.
And it'll just be consistent, whichever...
It's good for people reading it. Excuse me, let me...
Is everyone okay with me including a break consistently through the document? I think we're only gonna have two, actually.
I think it's, if you have them, I do think they help organize things.
It doesn't matter to me, you can put it or not.
So we just put one up here, consent group one?
I was just gonna put, add another break between Article 7th and 8th. It says consent agenda grouping one.
Yeah.
And then, so that way people know that the 1, 2, 3, 4, you know, these are articles they've seen every year. I would, I would assume that out of all of these, the one that might get pulled out is the revolving funds because it is technically new.
I agree.
But, I mean, that's the whole point of the consent agenda. You can take it out if you want to, but if nobody has any question, then we just can go through it.
We should recognize that it could be some discussion or controversy.
Well, yeah, any of them could.
Forcing some.
Any of them could.
I think that, that particular one is probably, it's really new. It's, if we're just doing the funds as we had before, and approving with the same levels and that, okay. But this is a different thing, it's a new thing. I would say that it's probably better to not have it as part of the consent agenda. But I would also be willing to move it beyond senior care. Changes the number.
Steve, what would you like to do? I mean, I'd be explaining this to you. I just thought it was revolving fund, we'd had revolving funds.
What you're saying is the second level of, uh, items has its own separate consent, right?
The, we've got the first grouping.
Of the capital.
Consent agenda one.
In, in consent agenda one includes revolving funds as it traditionally has.
I'm talking about consent agenda 2 and 3. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I was talking about whether or not...
I'm talking about Article 10 should not be part of the original consent.
We should take it out. It doesn't matter to me, I just need to remember everything.
Here's the question, the main question about what we've...
Oh, oh, you just, you wanna take that out because it's just a new revolving fund, and it needs its own explanation?
I, I think there may be some discussion about it. And I, and I think it, it's been considered. But here, the question would be this, is, do you feel comfortable having 7, 8, I don't know, 7, 8, 9, and 11, 12, 13 all part of consent agenda, and the one in the middle, meaning this one, not part of the consent? It, it's a little bit confusing to people.
If we pull it out?
If you keep it in the same order. I, I don't know how you feel about that. And I'm, that's why I said, I'm going to put it after senior care, so that you have consent. Then you have this one, the revolving fund, and then you have consent again. How do you feel about having a non-consent in the middle of the consents?
Or do you feel it should be non-consent?
But that's our call, whether it's on a consent, so to speak, or not. And I'm not sure what we've decided yet, but I'm saying if we've pulled it out, how do you feel, Steve?
It's the select, board of select persons' call as to whether you use it in the consent agenda. But understand that consent means anybody can pull any article out and discuss it.
Right.
So it really doesn't matter on a consent agenda what order they are. They just raise their hand, I wanna discuss Article 10.
They do not have to be numerically consistent, as far as you...
They don't have to technically be, right?
You can do 1, 3, 10, 19.
I'm just asking Steve how he feels about not having it consecutively.
It really doesn't bother the, the flow of discussion, because...
You don't care, if we choose to pull it out at the last minute as a consent item. If we take the asterisk out a week from now, you're okay.
You're saying we decide to...
We decide, it's our decision as to what's consent.
Well, are you gonna take it out?
We should probably talk now about it.
Yeah, if you're gonna take it out, take it out.
I need to remember things, it's...
If you're gonna take it out, take it out, don't...
I don't, I don't know, as I see any great reason to take it out.
Right.
I don't see any reason to take it out either.
Anybody can discuss any one of them.
Yes, but then you can have the whole, the whole warrant can be a consent agenda.
No, but you don't, you don't do that, because then everybody will pull everything out. The name, the nature of a consent agenda is there is no discussion, period.
That's right, it's, it's things that you do not expect.
If you wanna have a discussion, it has to come out and let down some.
Let me ask you, Dick, is there a controversy over creating a new revolving agenda?
There may be, yes.
But let, let somebody pull it out.
It's a total, first of all, the board, first of all, there are people who want a revolving fund that, and you've been involved with it for at least a decade, have been told, no. That is the board of health. So, all of a sudden, we create a revolving fund. We have not created a revolving fund, to my knowledge, in a decade. So we're creating one.
We just created 3 last year.
We didn't create them, they always exist, they always existed. We reauthorized them. The 3, we always, those are the 3 that we've been reauthorizing for the last decade or more. More than, at least a decade.
Well, back, back up a little bit. There was, there was a movement 10 or 15 years ago to try to eliminate all revolving funds. And we worked hard at trying to do that. And we got rid of some of them, okay? But I still would reserve the fact that there are still places where you still might want to use a revolving fund.
Given this discussion.
And I'm not, I'm not discussing whether we should or not have this revolving fund. I'm discussing whether it is something worthy or expect perhaps to have dispute on or discussion about. And the idea of the Consent Agenda is to try to pick things out that are very standard and typically non-controversial. This one, because of our history, and again, you've been involved because I know you've told them no, no, you can't have a revolving fund. And this year they haven't asked for it, but I said you're. Dick, given that, given that discussion, I didn't even do the history of revolving accounts, but you're absolutely correct. And you don't want to have a Consent Agenda where you've got 8 items and 6 of them are pulled. It just defeats the whole purpose of it.
True.
So if you have controversy over creating a revolving account, then make Article 10 not part of the Consent Agenda. And, and as far as that concerned, you're right, it should be moved after Senior Care.
What does that do, what does that do to Kelly's numbering system?
It switches the.
As long as I know now, I'd rather change it now.
So it could go to Article 13th and Senior Care go to Article 10?
You just put it on the end.
Just put it in between.
I think people will figure it out if we renumber it.
Actually, it's gonna come out to be Article 12 and Senior Care, oh, excuse me, it's gonna come out to be Article 13.
Article 13, the other one's all.
Senior Care is gonna be Article 12 and everything's gonna be moved up.
I don't know at these meetings whether there are people to stand up and discuss this. People involved in the public hall, we couldn't care less if this is a revolving fund, but the financial people came to us and said.
It's the right thing to do, there's no question.
Oh, there's no question.
Okay. Because I didn't know if you thought there might be some controversy, did you ask someone there?
What a help I stand just in saying how controversial this is.
If you thought there would be, I just wanted to make sure there was someone from a financial background to explain why they would like to have this.
The Board of Health isn't gonna remember what we did 10 years ago.
No, no, not, they, they recently asked for that. I've gone to the meeting, they wanted for the vaccines for the revolving fund. It's a logical. To be honest with you, there's not gonna be much discuss, discussion over this article. It's creation of a revolving account for very legitimate financial and accounting reasons. So let's just pull it out of the agenda, consent, and just move on.
Yep.
Okay. All right, done. Okay, 14.
It's cleaner that way.
It's not, it's not, it's not gonna save that much time, just put it up.
So, okay. So my next question is, do I put it underneath Consent Agenda Group 2 or just put it in between?
You put it in between, you put it in, you, you.
I should have just left it at 28 where it was.
You know, listen, if you're gonna put these in, if you're gonna put a Consent Agenda, say.
I don't care.
Kelly, you gotta listen to me on this.
I am, I am.
You know, it's real easy to just stick it between the 2 Consents.
Okay, that's what I was.
Between 13 and 14.
Perfect, I don't.